Excellent. Alrighty, we'll get started. We can, we can take the deck down for a minute. I just have some things to read into the record. Thank you so much. And just to repeat from anyone that's here from the public, good evening for those of you who are here for the Community Environment, Cultural Affairs and Economic Development Committee meeting. That meeting where New York City Parks will update, update us on the Capitol Project to reimagine the Uomo Park will start immediately after this public hearing. And so be it this hearing is called to order on Thursday, June eighth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-four P M. This meeting is being held via Webex as per New York State legislation extending virtual access to public meetings under the New York State Open Meeting Law, which allows New Yorkers to virtually participate in local government meetings during an emergency executive order. The purpose of this hearing is to invite public comments. If we could just do a little housekeeping, if you're not muted, I see just one person not muted. Great. Thank you so much. The purpose of this public hearing is to invite public comments on the proposed zoning text amendment referred to as the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality. On April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Department of City Planning referred out the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality, citywide zoning text amendment N two-three-zero-one-one-three Z R Y C E Q R number twenty-three D C P one-three-five Y, beginning the public review process. The proposed zoning, zoning text amendment intends to implement changes to the city's zoning resolution to remove impediments to and expand opportunities for decarbonization products within all zoning districts and across all fifty-nine of the communities of the city's community districts. The application for the zoning text amendment N two-three-zero-one-one-three Z R Y is subject to community board review. However, zoning text amendments are not subject to the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. The Department of City Planning is referred, is referred this application to the affected community boards for sixty days. Comments or recommendations on this application are due by July third, twenty twenty-three. The Department of City Planning announced intentions to propose three City of Yes zoning text amendments in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. Community Board fourteen held a preliminary meeting with D C P to review intentions and goals prior to the release of any text amendment details on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Community Board fourteen hosted a fund for the City of New York's planning fellow, Morgan Ruther, who monitored the unfolding of the proposal and studied some implications as they relate specifically to C D fourteen. Those findings were presented at the Housing and Land Use Committee meeting on May tenth, twenty twenty-three. And if you'd like to review that meeting, it is available on our YouTube channel. We will begin with the presentation by representatives of the Department of City Planning. Representing the Department of City Planning are Hanif Yazdi, David Wiseglass, Emily, excuse me, Emily Bachman, planners, New York City Department of City Planning. Afterwards, those wishing to ask questions or testify must clearly state the name for the record and organization if applicable prior to giving testimony. I am ready to hand it over to our presenters. Thank you so much for being here. We're looking forward to, to learning a little bit more about this and giving our feedback. So you may proceed whenever you'd like to.
Thank you so much, Joanne, for your remarks. Looking forward to a lively conversation this evening. And I thank you again for giving us the opportunity to come here and to address the board with this unique and very interesting, in my opinion, proposal. And thanks to Emily also for being here. She's a senior planner with the Department of City Planning. We're colleagues here and she'll be helping me this evening answer some questions that I won't be able to answer if it comes to that. So thank you again. My name is Hanif Yazdi. As was mentioned, I'm a borough planner here at the Department of City Planning with our Brooklyn office. I'm the liaison to Community District fourteen. And I'm joined, as I mentioned, by Emily, who will be monitoring the chat as well for, for questions and can answer questions at the end. We'll be sharing an overview of the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality. It is a proposal to update the zoning resolution to help meet New York City's climate goals. And let's get to the next slide. Alright, so the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality is the first of three projects that the Department of City Planning is developing as part of a broader City of Yes initiative. Two other proposals, economic opportunity and housing opportunity, will begin more public engagements later this summer. They are distinct and independent proposals, which are being staggered the rest of the year and into next year. Many of the elements of the carbon neutrality proposal are urgently needed during this time. And they're aimed at delivering zoning relief to home and building owners. We're trying to undertake smart retrofit projects to cut energy costs and help the environment, but are prevented from doing so by the zoning. And that's a critical piece of information here. This is about creating an opportunity to do things that are currently banned and prevented. First, I want to take a minute to frame our conversation largely. It's important to emphasize that we are facing a climate emergency in this time. And that climate emergency is largely driven by global carbon dioxide emissions. Carbon dioxide makes up the vast majority of the country's greenhouse gas emissions, around eighty percent in twenty nineteen. In twenty sixteen, the world community joined together to sign the Paris Agreement. That was a vision to cut human greenhouse gas emissions in order to limit overall global warming by two degrees Celsius and prevent further environmental damage associated with climate change. That was the Paris Agreement. But here in New York City, we've been implementing a vision. We've been implementing a vision here in New York City that really focuses on the kind of more local actions that we can take. And it falls under that larger umbrella of achieving carbon neutrality. And that goal, just to be very specific, is about reducing our city's emissions eighty percent by twenty fifty or that eighty by fifty framework or a series of goals. So what do we mean when we talk about a carbon neutral city? Well, what we mean is a city where we're focused on reducing operational carbon emissions. That means we're a city that has reduced our overall energy needs. To do this, we'll need to retrofit almost every building in the city to become highly efficient and to reduce wasted energy. It's a city where we've cleaned the grid that we're using now. And that means we'll need to switch from fossil fuels to renewables like solar and wind. And it's a city where we've electrified all our remaining energy needs. And that means our vehicles too, means our buildings, it means moving towards electrically powered technologies. And as you can see in this chart, the key driver of our city's carbon emissions right now is by far our building sector. So what is the foundation of the proposal itself? Ten years ago, in twenty twelve, D C P issued Zone Green. That was the first comprehensive overhaul of our zoning to allow for rooftop, wind and solar. Today's carbon neutrality proposal is in many ways a follow-up to Zone Green. It's a chance to revisit older rules and update them in response to new science, technology and regulations. Those include a focus on decarbonization coming from the Paris Agreement and the eighty by fifty framework. It includes feedback from architects, engineers and advocates, including, for example, Urban Green Council's Zone Green Report. And it includes a conversation about recent regulations. Again, climate, the Climate Mobilization Act at the city level, which is Local Law ninety-seven, which many of you have heard about. That law, which is separate from what we're talking about this evening, but forms important context. That law will impose strict fines on large buildings that do not reduce their carbon emissions. It also kind of is informed by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which happened at the state level. That set ambitious solar and energy storage goals for the city. So those are two laws. They form the context of what we're talking about this evening, but they are, of course, separate from the proposed resolution. The development of this proposal began over a little, about a year ago when Mayor Adams announced his vision for the City of Yes. Since then, we've conducted extensive outreach with stakeholders across the city to help us ensure this proposal will be helpful to those who are trying to add solar, E V chargers or heat pumps to their homes and businesses. We've held four open-to-the-public info sessions. And we've partnered with the Urban Green Council to convene a group of technical and policy experts to review and provide feedback on an initial draft of the proposal. So along the way, we've engaged in conversations with partner agencies and local stakeholders regarding what zoning changes may be needed to help achieve our collective climate goals. And from these conversations, we've identified a number of ways that zoning itself can be modified. So tonight, we're going to review four key goals the proposal seeks to support. And we'll discuss seventeen specific zoning changes we've identified to help achieve these goals. The first key goal is supporting the decarbonization of our city's energy grid. Illustrated on this slide, our initiatives already underway at the state or city level. These are not part of our zoning proposal, but they are the context in which our work is situated. By twenty forty, New York State is legally required to achieve a one hundred percent renewable-based energy grid, which means developing a large amount of offshore wind and bringing in more clean hydroelectric power from upstate New York and Canada. It also includes putting all of our rooftops to work, generating electricity across the city. To utilize the energy from offshore wind and from rooftop solar, our energy grid will have to become smarter, more decentralized and more resilient to fluctuations with resources spread throughout the city. To support this cleaner decentralized grid, we will need more local energy storage. Essentially, we'll need large batteries in order to do that. To support the ongoing work of cleaning the grid, New York City zoning can help in five key areas. The first is rooftop solar itself. Rooftop zoning allowances can be modified to ensure that there aren't any limitations holding us back from our solar goals. In many districts, there are current limits on the amount of rooftop that can be covered by solar canopies. This proposal will update rules to ensure a roof can be completely covered by solar. The second address is parking. We need to take a similar approach to our city's eight thousand-plus acres of open parking areas to ensure that zoning is updated to always allow solar canopies over parking lots where they exist. The third is around community solar. Where one site is generating clean energy that's used throughout the neighborhood, it is currently considered a commercial use in our zoning, which limits where it can be installed. This proposal will allow community solar to be installed in all zoning districts, including large residential campuses, hospitals, schools and colleges in residential districts where it could be a great fit. The fourth is around energy storage. We will need to ensure that safe, and this is critical, safe F D N Y and D O B reviewed energy storage facilities are located where they are needed most. Energy storage is currently not allowed in the residential districts where people need access to clean and renewable energy. Zoning needs to be updated to add specific rules for energy storage and help facilitate its rollout across the city. And finally, we'll talk about onshore wind. Turbines currently face strict limitations in today's zoning. This proposal will create a new tool that can be used by future applicants to submit onshore wind facilities for a public review. They'll still need public review, and that public review process will take place with the City Planning Commission. The second goal we're seeking to support relates to eliminating fossil fuels from our city's million-plus existing buildings, almost all of which will be around in twenty fifty when we need to have achieved carbon neutrality, according to those regulations that I mentioned earlier. These buildings are by far our biggest source of carbon dioxide emissions. And to improve, we'll need to retrofit virtually every single building to retire oil or gas-powered furnaces and boilers, replace them with new, highly efficient electrical systems and improve the efficiency of exterior walls, windows and roofs to keep the heat and cool inside. It's important to note two laws adopted by the City Council in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one that are crucial here. For large buildings, which are defined as buildings over twenty-five thousand square feet and larger, Local Law ninety-seven will begin to impose fines if they do not cut their carbon emissions. Fines will begin to roll out in twenty twenty-four and they will increase through twenty fifty. Again, that's a rule that is separate from what we're talking about this evening, but it's an important piece of legislation to be mindful of. The second is the Local Law one fifty-four, which requires that all newly constructed buildings are electrified from the get-go. Fossil fuel-based equipment will no longer be allowed in new construction, according to that separate local law. With this in context, zoning can help support the decarbonization of buildings in three key ways. The first is electrification retrofits. So zoning can provide more flexibility to accommodate the increasing need for outdoor equipment, such as heat pumps, which cannot be located in building basements or cellars, to be located above the zoning height limit on building rooftops. The second is around exterior retrofits. So zoning needs to ensure that where someone is trying to add thicker insulation or re-clad the building by removing an old facade and replacing it with new, more efficient one, that they don't run into zoning obstacles that prevent them from undertaking the project. And the third is around fixing Zone Green itself. The twenty-twelve Zone Green Wall Thickness Deduction, which awarded a small amount of additional floor area for better-than-code buildings, is currently updated by this proposal to reflect the latest energy code and best practices for the future. So that's one of the updates that'll happen. Finally, a word on funding with regards to costs and implementation of these retrofits. Many funding sources at the federal, state and city level will be available. The New York City Accelerator is itself a program run out of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice that helps connect property owners with the technical and financial support to make the changes that will be needed. The third goal we're seeking to support with this zoning resolution is around the decarbonization of vehicles. There are currently two million private vehicles registered in New York City. Less than one percent of those private vehicles are zero emission. By twenty thirty-five, New York State policy has indicated that all new vehicles sold in the state will need to be zero emission. And we, as a city, need to prepare for that future. There are federal and state initiatives to help vehicle owners make the switch to electric, but at the local level, zoning regulates private parking and charging facilities and needs to be updated to help New Yorkers make the switch. Finally, this proposal also aims to support alternate modes such as bicycle, scooter or mass transit. Zoning can help support that goal of around vehicles in five key ways. The first is by allowing commercial charging facilities in all commercial and manufacturing districts. They are currently prohibited in about half the city's commercial districts. The second is around allowing building owners to designate a portion of their existing parking spaces to be offered up as public E V charging, sharing, E V charger sharing spaces. The same rules that currently apply today for car-sharing vehicles in existing parking garages or lots. The third is around flexible parking. We want to allow more flexible use of public parking lots, public parking garages and commercial accessory parking facilities by allowing car rental, car sharing, commercial vehicle storage and public E V charging within these facilities too. The fourth is around automated parking. We want to expand special rules that only apply in Manhattan today that allow for indoor automated parking facilities to be an option across the city. Finally, we want to update parking rules to acknowledge the need for public bicycle parking and allow bike parking facilities in commercial districts where they're currently not allowed. Finally, our last goal relates to reducing our city's stormwater and solid waste and helping eliminate the carbon emissions associated with both of these waste streams. We can reduce stormwater runoff by promoting greater permeability onsite. This means less water flowing to energy-intensive treatment plants. We can reduce the energy associated with hauling and processing garbage by reducing the amount by up to forty-five percent of our waste stream. Forty-five percent of our waste stream right now is organic material that shouldn't go to a landfill and can be reused within the city. We can reduce the carbon emissions associated with our food by promoting more local food production on our city's rooftops. Within this context, zoning can help decarbonize our waste stream in four key ways. First, we're going to talk about permeable pavers. Those clarify, we want to clarify zoning rules, zoning's paving rules to ensure that permeable paving, which allows water to infiltrate into the soil right where it falls, is always allowed. It's currently not allowed in many places. We want to update our zoning's tree, street tree requirements to allow for a new high-performance tree beds like connected tree beds and rain gardens. The zoning resolution today does not reference or account for composting or recycling. We are looking to add specific rules clarifying where these uses are allowed to help these sectors grow. Finally, around the question of rooftop gardens, rooftop greenhouses are allowed on top of non-residential buildings. But to build one, current rules require you to obtain a certification from the Chair of the City Planning Commission. By streamlining this requirement, we will allow D O B to review applications for building permits and cut costs and simplify the process for those looking to grow food on rooftops. So that concludes our overview of the seventeen specific zoning changes we've identified to help support the larger goal of decarbonizing our city. You can see those displayed here. And slide. As a citywide zoning text amendment, all fifty-nine community boards are concurrently reviewing this proposal with their borough boards and borough presidents. In July, the City Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the proposed changes. The community board resolutions can be submitted to the City Planning Commission up until their vote in mid-September, where the commission will vote on approving or modifying the proposal. And we'll pass it on to the city council, where the council will have another fifty days to review and ultimately adopt the proposed changes. So with that, I'll conclude the formal part of our presentation here and take any questions that you may have. Thank you again for taking the time.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Since we have no registered speakers, I'd also like to make sure that if there are members of the public here that'd like to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. And I'll begin with board members, since those are the hands that I'm seeing right now. We'll start with board member Ed Powell.
Thank you. Is, will these slides be available for review at any point later on a website or anywhere?
Yes, it's my understanding they will be, and we most likely will be able to send a copy to the board for review as well. Is that correct, Emily?
We can send, we will send all of these slides in addition to more detailed slides that break down the specifics of each proposal. In this presentation, we fit like between three and five of seventeen individual proposals per proposal side. So we'll give you an even more detailed version in a presentation to view.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that. There's a hundred and sixty-three pages to the zoning text and there's a lot to go through. A little more detail would be very useful. I appreciate it. Next to speak will be board member Nina Sebghir.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good to hear that there's some work being done to deal with, well, what we're getting from Canada's a tip of the iceberg. So I have actually a number of questions. First of all, all of these implementations in terms of solar and different heating systems and so on and so forth cost a tremendous amount of money. And in a city where rents are extremely high, both for businesses, in particular for private individuals, you know, tenants, you know, for residential purposes, how are these expenses being covered so that, because otherwise, you know, obviously it gets passed on to the tenants and could become, you know, just so costly that they get priced out of even staying in the city altogether. So that's question number one. Question number two is, again, this pertains, I guess, more to private homeowners. But for, for many people who live in these much older homes, these hundred-year-old houses and so forth, getting the kind of electricity, in other words, two-twenty, two-forty, to, you know, be able to use things like, say, making the switch from gas stoves to electric is prohibitive. I mean, I priced it for my own home and it's like upwards of three thousand dollars. So no, sticking with the gas stoves for now, because what else am I going to do? And then the, the third thing, which is kind of more, I guess, a point of interest, when you were talking about the bicycle parking and making, you know, bicycling easier for people to do. One big barrier for many people is having a place to safely keep their bicycles, say, when they're at work. I carry ten pounds or so of locks with me and one has an alarm and somebody tampered with my bicycle and the security came out and was like, you know. But that's like crazy. And there is somebody here in New York at the Brooklyn, who, through the Brooklyn Navy Yard, developed a system of pods that are solar-powered. These are the OONiPods, spelled O-O-N-E-E. And I think that there just has to be a really huge push to get those at subway stations, places of business, hospitals, you know, just, you know, shopping areas, et cetera. And they come in all different sizes, so they can be, they can be made to accommodate the space at hand. Thank you.
I can answer the questions as they come in or wait for multiple inquiries. I can, okay. So on the, thank you very much for your questions. These are really helpful in shaping kind of our conversation this evening. So the first is around the cost of a lot of these, the implementation of some of these technologies. So there are financial resources available to New Yorkers who want to make the switch that is mandated by the local laws that I mentioned earlier and by those state regulations and some of those other local laws. I can't speak too much to those because that's not the subject of this zoning resolution. But what this one does is it will give permission to a building owner, for example, to install rooftop solar where currently that is forbidden. Or for example, if there's a parking, those eight thousand acres of, of park, surface parking, you know, those can now be used to generate electricity. Now, we can't guarantee that those will result in savings that are passed on to tenants or, or other users of electricity. But right now, the, the cost of implementing something like that is going to be something that a building owner, for example, will have to pay for themselves or use some of the funding available in order to implement some of these programs. And they can actually generate, they can sell that electricity back to the grid. So that can be something that is a source of, of revenue for somebody who implements one of these solar arrays and sells that electricity back to the grid. On the question of people in older homes that, where it's expensive to make the change, again, Emily posted a really helpful link in the chat. So that's really in order to help folks make those changes in line with the local laws that are coming out of city council. So we're hoping that people are able to do that. The bicycle parking piece is, is very interesting. I haven't heard anything about the OONiPods or, or similar things like that bike parking infrastructure before. But certainly allowing that bicycle parking in commercial areas where it's currently not allowed will result in more biking, you know, bike parking infrastructure. Now, whether that is the kind of secure parking, bike parking infrastructure that you're mentioning or not, that's an interesting question. It's one worth talking about.
It actually affects.
Thank you very much. Thank, thank you very much. I, I wanted to just jump in here about the financing as well. I made a statement at Borough Board when we had our presentation earlier this week and is germane to the conversation that we're having right now. Just to bring up a Local Law ninety-seven that's in effect, a twenty-five thousand square foot building isn't very large. And when you look at it from the perspective of micro homeowners, let's talk about condo owners or co-op owners, to, to go ahead and, you know, meet that local law, that's a tremendous expense. And with regards to condominiums, we're not eligible for financing because in, people who own condominiums are not eligible for financing. The, the property is owned by the, the deed owners. So there is no property to be financed as a corporation. And I think Nina brings up a very good point that if the building is owned by a landlord who, who has rental units, every major capital improvement is going to come with a forty, you know, a one-fourtieth cost added to the rent every year. So my, my big point that I made at Borough Board was it seems that D C P is kind of siloed in their thinking. There's a, there's a proportion of aspirational and then practical, right? So we need, we need more support with regards to when D C P looks at these zoning text amendments. They say, what is the practicality of doing that? How can we coordinate with the Department of Finance and perhaps create tax abatements for landlords or micro homeowners or small homeowners, one, two, three family? That gives them the opportunity to offset property taxes with making these changes to come into, into compliance. I just wanted to state that you've already, you know, let us know what, you know what the resources are. Most of us, or some of us know what the resources are. They're both federal, state and the city. But I wanted to make that point here for the record because this is what I said at Borough Board. Thank you. I'll move on to the next board member, who is Carl Henry Cesar.
Hey folks, good evening. Happy Thursday. Hope everyone is remaining safe. And so, Hanif, thank you very much for that presentation. And so I have a piggyback question off of finance. And so I have a piggyback question off of financing, and then I have another question about, I started reading the zoning tax amendment, and, you know, it's a question about like the 10,000 square feet for the electrical infrastructure equipment, I believe. But basically, my question for the financing is similar, where it's just, there is a portion of the presentation where it mentioned the goal by 2040 to have 100% of the energy be renewable. And then there is also the statement that it is mandated per New York state policy that by X year, people need to have electric vehicles. And so, similar financing question, just wondering, is there going to be any sort of subsidizing or any sort of other, you know, financing vehicles that will be considered for that stuff, just because things are expensive, they're getting more expensive? And just figuring, you know, the distribution of people who will be able to directly afford that out-of-pocket versus not, that's definitely going to be a challenge. So that's a, that's a point for consideration. And then the second question I had too is, I could use some help in terms of understanding the part that I read about the 10,000 square feet for the electrical infrastructure equipment, just because what I was trying to understand is, basically, the thought exercise I was playing in my head is, okay, I live in Brooklyn Community Board fourteen. If there's a lot, that's 9,900 square feet, and somebody wants to use it for a parking lot, but then some, but then person B says, no, I want to put in solar panels. Is this saying that the solar panels would take priority over the parking lot? Like, that's the kind of thing I was trying to figure out in my head, and I didn't even know if I was looking at it the right way. So those are my questions, thank you.
I will attempt to answer this one, but I'll pass it on to my colleague. It's my understanding that, so according to the zoning resolution now, the solar arrays are not allowed in, in a lot of surface parking areas. So this proposal will reclassify those solar arrays, and they would legalize them for up to 10,000 feet in residential districts as of right. Did I, did I hit that right, Emily? If you want to step in. But it's my understanding that, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. It wouldn't be, this change wouldn't, wouldn't be like it should be solar overparking. It's not like that at all. It's, it's about tweaking, making sure that solar canopies are a permitted obstruction in a parking lot, regardless of zoning district. So that's the change. And I, and I do want to highlight, I'll put it in the chat too, but one thing that's super helpful, if you want to dig deep into these proposals in addition to the longer presentation that we'll send, is the annotated zoning text, where in addition to seeing the line-by-line changes, there are comments from our zoning division that explain like exactly what's happening, like what that change means. So I will put that in the chat in just a second. I also want to, just around the cost questions, we hear you loud and clear. I will say, like, and this is kind of a bureaucratic answer, I'll be honest, but the Department of City Planning is, our jurisdiction is zoning. So we are limited to, like, what are the rules about what can happen on a zoning lot, which is essentially a tax lot. It doesn't include streets and sidewalks, so that's why we're not including things like OONIE pods, that's in Department of Transportation's jurisdiction. And then around financing, that's, that's really a legislative question. So most of our goal with this proposal is to look at, where is the New York City zoning resolution currently limiting people's ability to make these types of green changes? It is not inclusive of funding. So we are really happy to talk about what funding exists, but a lot of that is really out of our jurisdiction. So we hear you loud and clear. It's also definitely something that is a continued conversation in the, in City Hall and with city council and at every level of government, and needs to be. Yeah. If we didn't fully answer those questions, please let us know.
No, you did. Thank you both very much for that clarity. I appreciate that. And then, yeah, you know, my ask is just as you and, as you and your colleagues continue to work on that stuff. Yes, anything you can do to continue having those cross-agency conversations, that would definitely be helpful, you know, in making sure that the product that all, that all these parties put together is, is the best product possible. So thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Dwayne Josephs, followed by manager Sean Campbell.
Good evening. Forgive me for not having my video on, but having some connectivity issues. Thank you, Hanif and Emily, for a great presentation and offering some context around what our fellow kind of presented to us a few weeks back. I just wanted to kind of, I guess, piggyback on something that Carl mentioned about, and my question was around this, whether or not there was a cross-agency task force of some sort that was being developed in anticipation of these zoning text amendments being ratified by, by the city. Because, you know, often what happens is, these, you know, initiatives happen and then the rollout becomes really clumsy and cumbersome. And as you can already see, there, there are a lot of questions around financing. We are a district that is heavy with, you know, single-family homes, a few multifamily dwellings. You know, Sean always mentions how much, like, I think, Sean, what you say is, 70% of our district is, is, the land use is single-family homes, whereas 30% is the buildings, and it's the reverse of the population. So I would just encourage you, or just recommend, that you all really try to facilitate ahead of time, anticipating that these amendments will be ratified. Some sort of cross-agency task force that deals with communication and education to the public around some of the incentives, especially to landlords and building owners, some of the incentives that are there for them to make the modifications that are going to be necessary to meet our goals.
Definitely. So we, we're in pretty constant communication with the Mayor's Office of Environmental, Climate and Environmental Justice, who manages the New York City Accelerator page, which is, is a comprehensive review of all funding options available. I also want to note, because you, you pointed out the high proportion of single-family homes in the district, that local law ninety-seven, so the, the law passed by city council in 2019, that mandates building retrofits for buildings over 25,000 square feet. That does not apply to buildings under 25,000 square feet. So right now, there is not any kind of mandate for single-family homes and, and for the majority of one to four family homes to make these kinds of changes. So when we talk about things like solar or building efficiency in that type of building, it is purely optional. And our proposal is all about making those things an option for people. But there's not currently any kind of mandate or anything that would, that would force a single-family homeowner or the owner of a smaller building of any type to make those types of changes.
That's great to hear, but just as Nina, my colleague Nina, mentioned, and also Joanne, the condo owners, you know, and the single-family homeowner want to engage and participate in these, these initiatives as well. And it's, it's not a bad thing that they do it. So I think you should look at ways to incentivize them, even though it's not mandatory. There should be someone looking at ways that encourage or incentivize those homeowners to want to participate in the program.
Thank you very much. Moving on to District Manager Sean Campbell, followed by Florencia. After Florencia, I think we should begin having a discussion about how we're going to, how we're going to present this to the board, so we don't run out of time. We're already at 45 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. I sort of have some concerns about the balance between what still seems to be aspirational and undeveloped in this proposal. There's language about what DCP wants to do, and, and one of the things you want to do in some places is add rules, but the rules haven't been articulated. And so I don't, in terms of commenting, to have a board comment on something that might not be fully realized seems a little premature. I think where, where I see that in practical matters is the discussion about local storage, local energy storage, making that as of right, but doing it safely according to DOB and FDNY guidelines. But if there's going to be such broad guidelines to make it as of right in every single space, I just feel like that might be a place where additional review on, on, if not a case-by-case, then area-by-area basis might still be necessary. I think another place where I haven't seen how the practical implication would, would affect our district is, when you talk about stormwater and flooding issues, we have a number of chronic locations in the district, and I don't know to what extent this text amendment would prioritize locations where that's happening and to what extent it would interact with DEP programs or policies that are also put in place. So again, it goes back to concerns about silos. And then even where solar would be, would be optional but made possible, I don't know if in historic districts, LCP would do a, sorry, LPC would do a certificate of appropriateness that would pertain to the entire district, or if it would still have to be a home-by-home basis. So I think those are a lot of the details that, when we look through the lens of this particular district, would need to be understood before a board could make, you know, an informed comment. So that brings me to the last thing I promised, which is, given all of that, and the fact that you're going to give us a much bigger deck with specifics, but our last meeting of the, of our season is on next Monday. You, July 3rd is what our deadline is supposed to be, but you also said your public hearing is June, and we really have till September. So will the real deadline please stand up? Thanks.
Okay, yes. I think, I first just want to address, like, yes, it's seventeen proposals. We gave a very broad overview of them in this presentation. We have had, we've given and have posted online much more in-depth presentations, which I can put in the chat as well, in public, in public meetings since last October. So I, I do understand that it, it could be overwhelming if it's the first time you're seeing it, and I'm sorry if it's the first time you're seeing it. For, the real deadline, please stand up. It is the deadline of the CPC vote. So that is September, let me make sure I get it right, it's September 13th. So our public hearing is July 26th. Members of the public can come and talk at that hearing. The vote is September 13th, so community board resolutions. That's the real, the real final due date for that. After that, it goes to city council, so there's still a chance to make sure your city council member knows how you feel. With the energy storage systems, I want to clarify a couple of things about what the proposal is, because we really gave a pretty broad overview. Right now, the zoning resolution doesn't have clear regulations around energy storage systems. This is building-scale batteries, basically. And so by interpretation, they're currently qualifying as electric utility substations, much larger, different pieces of infrastructure. And they are required to obtain a BSA special permit to locate in residence districts. They are currently allowed in commercial and manufacturing districts. And there are examples of them on the roof of Barclays, on the roof of the TWA Flight Center, and on the roof of Marcus Garvey Houses in Brooklyn. So they exist. When they're in residence districts today, it's because they got a BSA special permit. And the proposal is to make smaller versions of them under 10,000 square feet permitted as of right in residence districts. So they wouldn't go through the Board of Standards and Appeals, but they would still have to get an FDNY letter of approval and Department of Buildings permits to install. And then for larger installations over 10,000 square feet, in addition to the existing FDNY and DOB review, they would also still have to come for a BSA permit, the Board of Standards and Appeals. So that's, those are the specifics of that proposal. For the tree bed proposal, the question is about, does it, is there anything to incentivize more green infrastructure in neighborhoods where flooding is an issue? This proposal is really taking what is a very narrow requirement for developers to build tree beds when they build a new building, and expanding the universe of things that they can, that they can consider a tree bed to include rain gardens and extended connected tree pits. So it's, it's not addressing your question, and that is a DEP question. It would give DEP a wider variety of pieces of infrastructure that they could install when they're doing those changes. It also gives developers, private, private developers, those tools. And then for LPC, our proposal doesn't change anything about LPC overview. So any of the, any of these changes, even if they are allowed in zoning, if it's in a historic district or on a historic landmark building, you still have to go through LPC approval. And I think that that was all the questions.
Thank you very much. It is 7:20. I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:30, because we have a committee meeting thereafter. I'm going to leave. So we have two hands up. Please be very brief, 30 seconds, and please have the answers be as brief as possible so that we can get to discussing how we want to proceed with bringing this to the full board. The first person is Florencia, the last person is Barton. Please be brief.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, what are this, if you have specific locations in mind for the storage facilities, the energy storage facilities for our community?
Well, they would be allowed as of right on the buildings that qualify, so those 10,000-foot. So the buildings in residential areas where they're currently, they need BSA approval, they would be allowed kind of on buildings without that BSA approval. They would need just FDNY write-off, sign-off and DOB sign-off.
Thank you. And the last question will be from Barton, President, board member. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I've said this before, but I'm just, you know, mine, find mind-boggling the number of proposals and the depth of the changes that you are requesting. And I don't think there's any way, you know, as hard and as honestly as you may have tried, that you could foresee any range of unforeseen consequences for even one of the teeniest little changes you're making. And so in all honesty, I would feel uncomfortable voting in favor of it, because then I would be signing on to whatever these unforeseen consequences are. Because I think that the scale of the changes you're suggesting would take a year for, you know, a solid staff to consider. And for us, as 50, you know, volunteers from the community, we would be, you know, foolish to even sign off on it, given two years to study it. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's move into a discussion on how the board members and attendants here would like to proceed in their recommendation to the full board on Monday. I think board member Prasant brings up a compelling consideration that an annotated, I've looked through the annotated version of the 163 pages of the zoning text, and, and it's a lot to go to and, and refer to. You know, the devil is in the details. I had a question about, you know, wind towers and where they're going to be allowed and, you know, and the height they're going to be allowed. And I know that's a concern in neighboring community boards. So I'm willing to open the discussion on how other board members feel about making a recommendation, not making a recommendation- a recommendation, not making a recommendation, tabling this. Board Member Glenn Wallen, thank you.
Thank you very much. My mind is going in a number of different directions at the same time here. On one hand, as Sean has pointed out, 70% of our neighborhood is smaller one-family homes, which means that I don't think any of these are going to affect that 70%, which concerns me in that I think that it is a climate crisis and we need to address it and that the city is attempting to address it, I think is a really important thing. And I don't think they're going nearly far enough if they're allowing so many homes and there are many, many other neighborhoods around the city outside of Manhattan that are similar to, to ours. So that's a major concern, that it's not going far enough. Yes, they're absolutely guaranteed to have unintended consequences. Anytime a change is made, there are always winners and losers, always. I don't think there's ever an exception to that. Nevertheless, I would tend to want to move ahead with this because we're already way behind the curve. This brown, orange sky we had yesterday is going to happen more frequently as global warming continues and more and more of Canada dries out due to the heat, we're going to have to contend with that. There's going to be many, many other things along with that and we need to move ahead as fast as possible towards carbon neutrality. So I'm opting with reservations, but for approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Going forward, if we can just make our comments a little briefer. Next person to offer their opinion on how to proceed with their recommendation will be Board Member Liz Cedeas.
Hi, thank you. I, I agree that I think that we really need to badly start working towards carbon neutrality. So I'm in favor of this and of course I expect that DCP will continue to iterate, you know, one, if these changes go forward, which I hope they will, improving, you know, around the edges of things that don't quite get caught right.
Thank you. Next comments will be from Board Member Gregory Alvarez.
Thank you. Yeah. And thanks to everybody for the discussion. It definitely hit a lot of the points I had as well. For me, I think in terms of a recommendation, I would just say if the DCP is, is indeed siloed in terms of their focus on the overall question and addressing climate change, the only thing I would ask would be that there would be a, a more balanced analysis in terms of what those externalities that we've been talking about would be from a land use perspective. If that's the charge of DCP, that would be what I would ask for here, just, just to make sure that, that, that the considerations, at least from that perspective, are, are part of these text amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see one hand left towards this discussion. Barton, Board Member Barton Presant.
Thanks, Joanne. I guess I would advocate for sort of sticking as closely as possible to what Morgan recommended are the specific proposals that would have the most beneficial effect for CD14. She had the chance to really dig into this where none of us had been able to and study, you know, what would have the most beneficial effect for CD14. I guess it was the street trees, rain gardens, porous paving and the rooftop solar. So I mean, I would say, you know, if we could craft a motion that sort of incorporates what her conclusions had been, I think that would better suit our situation than giving sort of a blanket approval to all of the other proposals that may or may not have a beneficial effect on our district. Thanks.
Yeah, yes, of course. Apologies. The last comments will be from Board Member Carl Henry Sazhar.
No problem, Chairwoman Brown. My recommendation is just, how feasible would it be to have a, trying to think like a committee of the whole maybe in August, just because if I understand the deadline is September and I completely agree, climate change is real and it's important. I just don't feel comfortable saying yes with having gone through the 12 pages of the 163. And I did review what the Planning Fellow did and she did phenomenal work too, but I still think there's, there's a ton of details to dig into. So that's it on my end.
Thank you very much. So we'll, we'll do this in the parliamentary fashion and that we have two, we basically have two motions that can come to the floor right now. We have the motion, what looks to me to approve with the conditions that are included in the Planning Fellow's documents and her observations about the district and the comments that we made here tonight. So that could be one motion and then we have the motion from Board Member Carl, well, the, the proposition from Carl Henry Sazhar that we table this so that further review can occur to the annotated version and the larger deck of slides. And then bring a committee of the whole in August to form a recommendation and then bring that in September. Not sure when that September date is going to be for a general meeting, so that would really predicate whether or not this would happen.
Sorry, it's September 11th is the September board meeting date?
Administratively, Sean, would it be possible if, if, if the motion passes to go to a committee, to table and go to a committee of the whole? Administratively, do you think it would be possible to get this, if approved, on the 11th? Could it be sent to CPC?
Yeah, because I think that it would be, that, that we wouldn't do the whole thing on, on September 11th. It would be done and then presented on the 11th, so it'd be pretty fully formed, nearly fully formed by the time it was presented. So yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that all the members here present before I introduce the, the first direction, which would be to table this for a committee of the whole in August so further review can be done and further, including the more detailed slide deck and the annotated version of the text amendment, the, the zoning text. So that that could be brought to the September meeting. So I'll put that motion out there on behalf of Board Member Carl Henry Sazhar. Does anyone second that motion?
I'd second that.
Okay. All right. So we will vote on this motion and see if it carries. If it does not carry, we will bring forth the second option, which would be to conditionally approve, as I stated later. So I will vote in the reverse. If we can just make sure that we have account of how many board members here are present and then I'll go ahead and vote in the, for objections first. Does anyone object to tabling this for the, the committee of the whole for presentation? For approval to the board on September 11th?
How are we going to vote? Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Well, so you, if you object to tabling this right now, then you would be objecting to this motion. So the motion is to table, bring, bring forth a committee of the whole in August after we have more details and then move it to September, at that committee of the whole, that's where it would be voted upon. Or, or a recommendation would be made, I'm sorry. And then that recommendation from the committee of the whole would go to the general board meeting.
Okay. I understand that. No, it's how do you want us to vote? Are we raising our hands? How are we voting?
Oh, I apologize. If you object, please raise your hand. One objection. Two objections. Okay, two objections. Anyone wishing to abstain from this vote? Lower your hands and you can raise your hand. Okay, no abstentions. Anyone ineligible to vote on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, we have two objections. It, it appears to me with how many board members are present that the motion carries. So this matter will be tabled for the extended slide deck, further review of the annotated zoning text, and we will convene a meeting of the whole. I hope some folks will be available to attend that, otherwise we will be giving up. All right. I really do need to close this public hearing. Board Member Denise.
Oh, I just wanted to know when we were beginning, would be scheduling that meeting so that we can all get it on our calendars?
TBD, do not know right now. We haven't even motioned to form the, the committee of the whole yet, so.
Okay. While you're considering it, also we'd need to know whether it's an in-person or WebEx.
Well, I've been apprised that it's 99.9% sure that the executive, that the emergency order is not going to be carried. So that's as of June 20th, meetings will have to be in-person or hybrid. But remember, the committee of the whole is only making a recommendation, right? So we will come to consensus about a recommendation and we'll bring that to the general meeting. Any, any comments about that, Sean? I think that we can do this via WebEx. Okay. And I think that will get good representation if we do it via WebEx. Alrighty. All right. I appreciate all of your responses here tonight. Going to close this public hearing at 7:35 PM and I am going to kick it off to the co-chairs, Dwayne Joseph and Barton Presant, so that they can proceed with the community, with the Community Environment, Cultural Affairs and Economic Development Committee. Thanks, everybody, for being here and your patience.
Right, what Joanne said. I will try to repeat it a second time. Welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Community Environment, Cultural Affairs and Economic Development Committee. We have one item on our agenda, which is a presentation on the in-progress design for the UMA Park reconstruction. I gather it's going to be given by Jim Morris, Director of Capital Projects and Brooklyn Operations, the Department of Parks and Recreation. I think I saw Anya in there somewhere. I hope we get a chance to hear from her. So I also want to reference my co-chair, Dwayne Joseph, who's here somewhere. I can't see him on my, no, can't see him on my screen, but I know he's here.
I'm here.
Dwayne, anything you want to throw in before we turn it over to them?
I just wanted to thank everybody for joining us tonight. Thank you for running on, on UMA Park. It's, it's a, it's been a labor of love in our community for a while to get this upgraded. Our own Ed Powell, former chair and current board member, was one of the founding families and founding member, or that pushed for this park. So I know it's near and dear to his heart. I know it's near and dear to Sean's heart as well, just because, you know, we are, she always mentions it, we're 59 out of 59 when it comes to, you know, our green spaces, our park spaces in our district. So having this after 30, almost 30 years of it being open for, for, you know, 30 years before it gets some sort of renovation budget is, is pretty exciting. So looking forward to the presentation.
One last thing, Sean, before I forget. Do we have any electeds or reps here whom we should acknowledge? Nope? Okay. Then I'll pass it on to you, Mr. Morris, and look forward to seeing it.
Great. Thank you so much and thank you for having us. We're very excited to kind of update our little presentation and, and our design about UMA Park. Just a real quick, as a recap of where we are, we received funding for, from the Borough President and from Councilmember Rita Joseph for this project. Obviously, it's been a long time coming and it's a very deserved place, so we're, we're very excited. We had in our initial, kind of we called a public input meeting, it was virtual back in December 14th, so about like six months ago. And yeah, I just want to real quick, before we jump into it, introduce it, a couple of different, we have, we have the crew ad here today from a couple of different areas from the Parks Department. I real, want to real quick introduce everyone and somebody, some familiar faces for sure. So I have myself and the Director of Capital Projects for Brooklyn Operations here at the Parks Department. We have Kat Caniata, who's on our team for Capital Projects and Operations. We also have Anya Hoyer and Carmine Ramadi from Partnerships Parks. Anya is someone that you clearly recognize and, and it's great to have her on the call. As well as, as a, we also have Denise Mattis and Dennis Flynn from our Capital Division. They're actually working on, they're going to be designing and, and working on this project. So, so yes, we're very excited and, and want to give a real quick update about UMA Park. So with that, what I'm going to do is, if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to share my screen real quick. We have a quick presentation, just kind of show you where we are in the process and a little schematic design that we want to show off. So I'm going to share my screen and kick it to Denise Mattis.
Actually, Jim, we're kicking it to Dennis.
Dennis, we're going to kick it right from Denise to Dennis. And yeah, let me see here, let me just get this going. Great. Can everyone see that? Fantastic. All right, Dennis, take it away.
We'll get it to go away. All right. Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here tonight and we're actually very excited to show you what we've come up with based on our community input meeting back in December. As Jim mentioned, you know, total budget for this one is, total funding for this is a little over $3 million. So we should be able to do some pretty neat things with this. Next slide.
Sorry. There we go. There we go. It's a weird technical thing. Let's see. All right, I'm going to stick with this. I know this is a little bit less fidelity, but it seems like this, this is what worked, it's broken a little bit.
Yep. That's cool with everyone. Based on our scope meeting we had, and I'll go into it in a minute too, we also had a secondary sort of input meeting onsite. But based on that, the goals that we came out with were reimagining opportunities for play for children of two to five, serving the naturally occurring retirement community adjacent to UMA, and then a continuity of community engagement, which this is actually always part of it tonight. Provide natural features, including expanded street trees and site plantings, improving access and circulation and visibility, which also led to one of the other things we heard a lot about is site security and designing for community self-determination and social resiliency. Next slide. So here's, it's, I, sort of the main thing that really comes out of these slides are, when you look at the slide on the right, is one of the big things that we had sort of taken into consideration is there is a, it's a unique site in that we do have a subway line that runs directly underneath, especially the northern portion of the site, although we also, although we also border it a little bit on the, a little bit on the right side as well. Another one of our standard slides, we always look at parks that are within a 10-minute walk. So pretty much mostly we're, obviously we're here at the sort of southeastern portion of a precinct park with the parade grounds a little bit to the west. But other than that, there's not really a lot of other small parks within a walking distance. Next slide. And I think it's pretty much everyone knows, you can see the, the subway line running, you know, right down through the middle of the site and pretty much mostly multi-story residential surrounding the site itself directly. So this is site analysis, something we do for all of our parks. You know, we kind of inform some of the design as well. So one of the things to note here is we do have that private community garden to the left side of the property, but that is not Park's property, so there's not anything within the scope of this project. The surrounding sidewalk is in a little bit beat up shape and could use a little bit of love, so we'll definitely be looking to clean that up a little bit and repair that. It's all expanding like the tree pits around it. And then when you look to the north part of the site, the upper portion, you can see where the subway line goes directly under that. And then in the next couple of slides, you'll see how that kind of affects us on that respect. And we'll go right to the tree, the tree inventory. For us, because of parks, we do pay a lot of attention to the trees, trying to improve the spaces that they're in. But also they're, also play a very important part for us because they provide a lot of shade, which is always much needed during the hotter summer months. And next slide. So this is one of the things we had to re, look into was the subway tunnel below and you can see it's very, very close and this is for the northern portion of the site. The actual top of the tunnel is probably, is approximately two feet below the finished grade of that plaza, what falls plaza area, sitting area that's there now. So it's something we definitely have to sort of keep in, keep in mind because it affects a number of other things. So um, it's something we definitely have to sort of keep in, uh, keep in mind, because it affects a number of other things. But um, yeah, but it's, it definitely, we could definitely work around it though, so this should be fine. Uh, just some general site photos, um, the one on the left is a really nice mural that surrounds, uh, that borders the adjacent tracks, uh, will be preserving it, but also uh protecting it all throughout construction to make sure it's safe. Uh, we also try to use that as a little bit of inspiration for some of the design ideas that we are going to show to you tonight. But you get an idea that's sort of sitting here, that's there. It's something that we, you know, we did years ago where we kind of lined things, but it really is not promoting uh you know, conversation stuff as the chairs are kind of not really set up for conversation. So we'll be looking to improve things like that. Uh, next slide. And this is sort of the southern end, and you can see again, the mural kind of wraps around, and again, we'll be uh looking to protect even this area and stuff like that, and you know, make sure it's safe all throughout construction. And you see some of the pavement uh there is kind of beat up. Uh, there's really no nice sitting areas for people as they want to watch their kids. Uh, and also the play equipment could use a lot of updating, you know, now we uh, everything that we do now is all about uh accessibility for uh children and people of all abilities. So we're going to upgrading it to our current standards of uh play equipment. Um, and you see even some of the safety surfaces will be a little bit beat up as well, so we'll be addressing that along with all the other work. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the uh surrounding sidewalks, there's some sort of tripping hazards that are out there now. So whenever we do any kind of capital project, we look to enlarge tree pits to give them a little bit better environment to help them you know, survive a little bit better, but also just making a little bit more of a safer uh walking condition around the sidewalk. So we'll be reconstructing the sidewalks all around the park. And then you see sort of the fence line on the right side as well. Uh, just some more photos of, you know, the surrounding fencing uh around the park. And this is along the southern edge of the park adjacent to the you know, this apartment building that's right next to it. So based on our community input meeting that we had last uh December, as well as the secondary meeting that we had in the months after, we basically kind of drives the design as we come find out what are some of the main priorities of, for the community. So sort of, sort of, there, ones that we have are like seating, communal seating, which I, like, when I'm pointed out on the northern portion, you know, we'll make it so the list set up a little bit more for conversation. Benches, game tables, tot tables, uh, just basically a variety of options, shade, as well as play with sensory elements, mural, we'll preserve the mural and stuff. As well as accessible play features. Senior fitness, that was another sort of piece that came out of our listening sessions. Uh, we'll, we'll try and sort of focus on balance, mobility, strength and agility. Uh, as well as, you know, being able to hold different events, whether it's gathering spaces or open space for tot birthday parties. And as we try and do with all our pro- parks is make them basically more welcoming with uh welcoming entrances, decorative paving, and then also safe and secure spaces for everyone to enjoy. So this is just a really basic way that we would sort of look at the site, and when we did, we realized that now with our, whenever we have sort of play equipment, we have different offsets, uh, in this case, we'll also have to worry about a um offset with the um M T A, um, required that they'll need on this space, the blue space that you see there. Uh, but because of that, we decided to flip it and move sort of the play area, it just made more sense to move the play area more to the corner, which is the right hand side of the space, and then make the area to the left more the sitting area and then also the fitness area. So this is just a, an overall uh look at the project, and you could see where uh these, the play area is more to the north with a little bit of a sitting area to the right of it, and then down below is more the sort of a sitting area along with the adult fitness, so we'll go into an enlargement of each of them. So here you see where we have a, like, a nice sized piece of play equipment, which we'll go into a little bit more detail further on the presentation. Along with some seating, uh, along Woodruff Avenue. But by doing this, it also allows us to, over along the right by the corner, to add a tot table with a roof structure on it to provide shade for the children. Um, as well as some uh cafe tables along the right-hand side to give a little bit of a different seating experiences for people. And also introduce a little bit of planting, you'll notice on the left, because we are right above the subway tunnel, so we have some green spaces that'll help us with the drainage. So we have some there along the left side as well as on the corner, just to give a little bit of a buffer from the surrounding streets. And the other part that you'll also notice is we have two entrances coming into the space with sort of the primary entrance being along uh Ocean Avenue. It's a little bit hard to see in this view, but we've created these little sort of sort of uh foyer is to enter into the park. Uh, and then with a secondary entrance uh going along Woodruff Avenue as well. And here's the southern portion of the site, and you can kind of get a sense on the along the right side, there's a little bit of a down by where the fitness equipment is. There's a little bit of like an entrance foyer, we've made these sort of like I'm going to call them these little triangle spaces that become like a foyer before you enter the space to make it a little bit more welcoming. And as you come in down on the lower end, there's um fitness equipment, it'll be geared more for adults. Again, with the idea of promoting um balance, agility, mobility and strength. And you can see along the left-hand side is that line going up along uh along parallel to the subway wall. And that is sort of that easement that we have to maintain for New York City Transit, so we really can't put anything within that space. But we did add some more cafe tables along there, you'll see the two cafe tables with the uh, the chairs. As well as, if you go to the right of that, there's a couple benches along with another cafe table with spaces that are open to allow for accessibility, if anyone's in wheelchair, they could uh sit there as well. And then as you go further towards the top uh with a little bit more seating along the edge with a buffer of planting to get a, give a little bit of separation from the s- uh sidewalk and the interior of the park. Everything will be low to promote, you know, good sightlines into a park for safety. And again, you can start to see that also at the top, where we've created this like little bit of a a vestibule or a foyer to head into the park. Just to help with that transition from the sidewalk space into the park itself. Uh, and this is just some of the fencing uh diagram uh for around the park, so along the left side, you'll see there's a seven-foot-high fence that we'll be maintaining between uh the community garden, and then you can see the ten-foot, you know, corrugated wall that will have, that has the mural again, that'll be preserved and remain as it is. But what we've done is we also, we've lowered the fences along the perimeter of the uh park. And with the idea that, uh, I believe is that between with, even though they're lower, it doesn't it doesn't sort of cut back from the safety of the park, we believe that between better sightlines and improved lighting will definitely help with the uh safety within the park. So what we've basically done is along the entire perimeter, you see we've uh lowered everything to four foot with double, uh, the single gate at the very top along Woodruff. And then double gates um for the other three entrances, the one into the north portion, as well as the two going into with the seating and fitness area. And this is some of the new lighting that we've introduced into the park, so along the north portion, we've added four light poles, and along the southern portion, added another three light poles, which should provide plenty of lighting within the park itself. And here's some of the play equipment, and what we did is, a lot of the colors that you see there were derived off, pulled off of the mural, and we also kind of stayed trying to pull along with the theme, because that was one of the things we heard within the listening uh sessions. So uh, you'll see within all the play equipment, there's a lot more sort of ground elements, and that's all part of the accessibility portion. With all of our play equipment, a certain portion of it has to uh meet certain accessible features for um children of all abilities. So all throughout you, if you compare this sort of the old play equipment, this has a lot more features on ground elements that also help kids with imagination. And if you look over to the right, we've even created like a little bit of a subway car that children will be able to go into. But with different things for that, uh, different sensory elements with panels that kids, kids touch and move uh all throughout the play equipment. We've also, within the uh, if you look at the top of the play structure, the uh, the person that designed it, he's not on the call tonight, but what he did is he took the uh I guess, the alignment of the different streets around UMA Park and incorporated that into the uh shade elements up above, and you see the lines, and that basically mimics uh the lines of the streets surrounding UMA Park itself. And here's just another view, the lower left, you'll see the uh, the tot um seating area. So they're just smaller uh tables for the kids. And again, you can see the, another view of the shade structures. Uh, and again, with the colors that were kind of pulled off the mural. This is a view inside the little subway car that was created. We're going to kind of open this up a little bit more, the uh screens that you see on the front will probably take some of those out, so it's not as enclosed, and just to keep it a little bit more open for visibility and safety. And also, oh wait, if you go back to uh, just even the other things that uh the designer worked into is if you look on the left side, just to give children a sense of where they are and where the park is within the community, just even uh, there's a little bit of a map on sort of that lower portion of the play panel. That kind of gives a sense of where they are within the, you know, within the local community, just give a little bit of a wayfinding. And you can see some of the play equipment, there's different ways of climbing, again, just to provide different challenges for both mobility, strength and uh balance for the children as well. Uh, and then here's just some of the uh, some of the images of some of the uh fitness equipment. Again, it's, again, it's geared more for adults, you don't see like chinup bars and stuff like that for the younger, but there's differently sort of like balance beams. You can see also little pods that are there sort of in the middle where somebody could hold on while working on agility and balance and stuff like that. And on the right side, those are a little geared more towards strengthening exercises. So we try and provide a little bit for everybody throughout the community of all ages. And these are just some of the materials that we use throughout the uh, the site, so you kind of get an idea of those are the uh, on the upper left, the cafe tables uh with the chairs that would be yellow, to just egg, bring in a little bit more color, because that seems to be one of the desires of the community. Uh, then you get an idea of the uh, the fencing, uh, the site furniture, the uh, the benches, the lighting. And then on the lower right, you can see um sort of an image of what the pavers would be like throughout the site. And that's sort of the pattern that you'll see right above it, as well as some of the planting that you'll see throughout. Again, all the planting would be low. Again, everything's all about keeping good sightlines into the park for safety, but while still providing a little bit of color as well as the beds to help us a little bit with the uh, the drainage within the site. And that's the overall image of it, of it, and it kind of gives you a little bit better idea, you can see the entrances, when you go between the upper area and the lower area, that little vestibule, vestibule or foyer that we've created as well as on the uh, the lower portion as well. And that should be it.
Dennis, can I just, I just wanted to add just a couple things, just points to kind of um think about too. Part of our reason for doing those vestibules, as you see them there, that sidewalk is rather narrow. And because we're enlarging the tree pits, if you see where those are located, we've made a little more space so people can get, can get through um along the sidewalk side, on the sidewalk, um. What else did I to uh just emphasize um the fact with the play equipment that we, we do, we do make all, everything inclusive, we're ve- we're very um that's one of our main goals, to make it inclusive, as well as making sure there's a lot of activities, so um I, I hope that you see that we did incorporate a lot of activity, not just the ground level, but a little bit higher. And as far as this, um, there are some other elements here that we should note, Dennis, I think the map, there was also a a um indic- indicator map on one of those panels as well.
Right.
Um, that a child can see where they are, a little more graphic and colorful. Um, it's not shown here, but there are some um custom touches here that were really thought through in terms of designing the space.
Then if that's all you all want to uh chime in with to begin with, I, I first want to thank you so much. I'm really amazed at how much you've been able to put into a, an awkwardly shaped site. I personally love the subway car, you're probably going to have to pry me out of there, you know, at five o'clock every day. Um, and actually, that was a question I was going to ask, will it ever be locked? Or, I mean, because the four-foot fence kind of makes it move.
It, it likely won't be locked, the, the sites that are locked are typically ones that we do in a partnership with like the precinct locally. And the site is small, yeah, we don't, we just don't have the, like, logistical
Just curious, because you said gates rather than, you know, I guess they're not really critical, whatever. Um, so first, do we have any signups? Does anybody know? Sean, anybody?
Nobody pre-registered.
Got it. Then I'd like to open it up to board members, um, Dwayne, you want to fire away, co-chair?
Uh, yes, um, I'd like to say thank you very much for this presentation, I'm actually really excited, I live down the block. Um, from UMA Park, and my younger relatives now utilize the parade grounds and a few other parks instead of going, you know, a half a block down the street to utilize the park, uh, so I know my, my younger cousin Ella is going to enjoy this. Hopefully in the next couple of years, once it's built out. My only um suggestion, um, like many others in the area, as much color as you can bring, if you can make, you know, paint that fence any other color than black, um, I know the community would love it, it may not be standard, but we're different on that side of CB fourteen. Our ward is a little different, but anything to bring more color uh to the space would be appreciated, but I mean, overall, I, I love the look. And I hope in the end it makes the folks like Ed Powell, who, you know, helped to to create this uh many, many moons ago, make them proud um for what they left, the legacy they're leaving in the community.
Sean, I believe you're next.
Thanks, um, just is I should know this, but is the is it locked now? Has, is this a change in the policy? Has it been locked previously?
I'm not, you know, I, Sean, I'm, I'm not too sure, because there's just so many sites, I can check and to see if, because some of these sites do have like special arrangements that with the precinct that may, it may be locked, so I, I, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm not too sure, but I can confirm and check, and if that's the case, we can, we could uh pursue that kind of arrangement, it's kind of outside of the capital process, but we could arrange that kind of separately as that process, so I'll look into it and see what the
Thanks, I'll do the same and we can compare notes, and I appreciate that. But, but there, you know, that, it's, it's just and this isn't a capital question either, so you can punt me if you need to, but just in terms of operations, if um it, a lot of times in our uh playgrounds, especially the tot lots, there is a uh no adult without a child rule, but here we're inviting, you know, adults into the pla- into the um the fitness area at the same time that, that um younger kids are being invited in. And oh, by the way, it's really great, I mean, it looks really wonderful, it is super thoughtful in its design, and it looks as though you've heard community, so um, so that is all appreciated, I didn't mean to jump to the problems, it's occupational hazard. But, so, so that interaction is, is um a question in my mind. And then, yeah, the four-foot fences um is a little bit of concern in terms of nighttime usage. And so how we would manage that is a question. And then the lighting, which would maybe mitigate some um nighttime usage that wouldn't, might be antisocial. But is that lighting going to be on all night, and is there a concern that we should entertain about glare into um the residents that are adjacent to that? Those are, those are my only worries, thanks.
Um, I, I could address those, um, so the first question about the fencing, um Jim, if you could flip back up to the enlargement of the play area? So one of, one of the things we did, knowing that we were going to be moving the play to the front there, was to, as you see, um, go up Was to, as you see, um, go up one. One or two more to the, to that, to the um.
To the fencing di- diagram, this one?
Oh, actually, that's that, that's okay too, one more, one more up.
Oh, I see your sense, okay, sorry.
This one. So, in in the um, existing plan, that gate is at the corner, right, so. We moved, we moved the gate. Out of the direct corner, obviously, because we want the safety of the kids first and foremost, that they're not. Running, running out into the street, so. There is the option to keep. The gate closed, say the one on Woodruff. And the double gate on Ocean, which is a little bit further down, also like closed. Not locked so much, but during the day, having it closed, so there is the security of that space. And just understand that that space is. Um, separate. From the, the lower space, so. Technically, as you were saying, a child, a parent needs to be with child or adult needs to be with child, that upper portion is pretty much. Um, kid, kid zone, kid friendly. Uh, kind of that space is, is children's space, um. The lower space then, we consider more of the adult space, and again, there's two entrances in and out. We don't typically want to have one entrance in, so for our safety, security reasons, we like to have two. So we have that, and we have that, as you can see, that sitting area, and then the fitness area, so there is a distinction between the two. And hope, and there is that um, way to separate both, but for both groups to be able to enjoy the park. Um, as far as the, the gate, the fencing and the lighting, um, we will use our, our typical parks lighting, um. Which should, in the locations we are showing, should not. Provide. Blair, but you know, they're not blaring lights, but there are typicals. Parklights um, that you see throughout uh, the city, um, and. Going, um, kind of continuing the uh, the initiative that Commissioner Silver. Um, started so many years ago with lowering the fences, actually gives you a little bit more. Um, visibility into the park and in, in also including that lighting, that should help with. A little more of the security and safety to be able to see into the park. So it's not so um, with the fence is very high. Believe it or not, there's that, it's, it's more difficult to see into what's going on, so there's more ability to be able to see what's there. And with the addition of the lighting, that's, that's our goal. To try to make that more visible, so that. People may not have a tendency to um, be uh, there to do a certain activity.
And and just also for the lighting, the lighting is, it's, it's actually. It's sort of managed by DOT, so it is controlled to the timing of the lights in the street. So it would be on, it would be on all night. But I think also, Jim, can you go back to the uh, the material slide? As, I think for the lighting, yeah, this one also, it's a little different, the lighting, uh, so the fixture, when you see this, the flushing meadows. There is a sort of a solid part on the top, so. The light doesn't tend to generate it up as much. It should be a little bit controlled, a little bit more focused on downwards instead. Downwards and out, so. Uh, we don't think it'll be that big, or really any kind of problem for the adjacent uh, apartments.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, I believe Gail, I saw your hand up next, go ahead.
Yes, well, first of all, all I can say is wow, I mean, I am just so thrilled. And excited um, about what is going on. Kudos to Ed Powell, Chairman Emeritus, Alvin Burke. And Sean, I cannot leave out Sean Campbell. For all of the work that you've done in the community at large, I'm just. Looking so forward, I'm happy for the community that surrounds. Uh, Woodruff Avenue and Umma Park, but for all of us. Who aren't still in walking distance, because I can walk there, y'all. To, to be a part of this, so. Thank you so much, the design is wonderful, so thank you for. Allowing us to have this meeting tonight, this made my day, thank you.
We're so happy to hear that, you have no idea, so, we appreciate all this positive feedback, I just wanted to add. Joanne Brown to that mix of people, because uh, Kevin Vogel, the, our designer, main designer here. Had mentioned that Joanne was really helpful in that. Um, that session that he had out on site, so. Joanne, thank you very much for your help with that, I just wanted to mention that.
Beautifully put, Gail, thank you so much for chiming in with that.
Yes, thank you.
Back to you, Dwayne.
Just one, one question, I actually forgot to ask this, but um, in terms of elements um, for the, the stationary. Parts of the park and the material being used. Um, you know, a lot of parents have uh, mentioned this to me, and so I'm bringing it up. Uh, that there'd be as little metal as possible, especially with the things like the slides and the tabletops. Uh, because they do collect that heat uh, during the summer months, or the warmer months. And then the kids aren't able to utilize. Um, it's like, especially the slide, uh, it gets super hot, um. So just, just a point as far as uh, the type of elements you're using in the space.
Yeah, we try, usually with all of our slides, what we try and do is have them so they're not on south facing slope, so. If the south is to the bottom of the site, so, um, actually, Jim, can, uh, can you go to the enlargement of the play area? Oh, there we go. So there is a slide, but you'll see it's on the north side of the slide of the uh, thing. Of the site itself, so it's not, it's more of a north facing slide instead of. The south, because we do. We definitely pay attention, because we realize it does get very hot for the children. So uh, that's why with, whenever we do the parks and stuff like that, we try and. Make sure all the slides are north facing, but definitely not south facing.
And the other thing to add to that, um, Mr. Joseph, there's three roofs um, on this structure. One of the main, you know, obviously, one of the, our biggest concerns here is that it is very sunny, and we. We took a lot of, you know, we did really take a look at. How this structure needed to have larger roofs for the top of it, so that. The structure is fairly shaded, and where you see those. Those roofs, those kind of three triangular pieces, um. Since we are, south side is on the bottom. The, the shade should be, the sun shadow should be casting more towards. That side of the slide, just so you, you know, um, so it looks like. It's pretty well, well shaded in terms of getting sun on that slide, but we can cer- we'll certainly look into. Obviously, metal versus plastic pieces, we typically. Stay away from plastic pieces for, for certain reasons as far as maintenance, but um, we can, we can certainly look into um, what we can do here, if that's. That's a possibility, but we will take that, you know, we'll look into that.
Yeah, Jim, can you go in the enlargement of the play equipment, there's one that shows um. It's the second enlargement of the play equipment, uh. Yeah, that kind, that kind of. Uh, I think, yeah, it's that view, so there is, so you can see the slide that's on the, on the north side of it, so you can see the, you know. There's a fair amount of like, sort of coverage with the shade structures above, which you think will help with that.
So I have a quick question for you all at Parks, um. Would you want a motion of support for us from today, or, because I noticed the agenda item specifies in progress. Are you thinking this is the proposal you want us to consider, or is there something more complete that you're envisioning in the future?
This is our, this is our proposal, I mean, we, we would love it if you, if you all agree that this is, this is um. What, you, you, you agree with what we have here, we certainly would, would welcome an approval, um. Uh, yeah, that, yes.
Okay. Basically, I was just trying to get a sense of timing, because if you're, you're going to be done and we were going to finish, that's one thing. But if we're going to finish the conversation and then put forth a motion, then discuss that, that's a second one. So thank you for clarifying, that was my hunch, that's fine, um, let me move on to Chair Brown, go ahead.
I'm just gonna laugh, because I think the approval of, you know, of, of this park is gonna be like really easy. Um, I just want to say thank you, this is amazing, I love it, I love it, I love it, I love it.
Great, thank you.
Very happy. Vogel, Partnership for Parks, uh, New York City Parks and the whole design team, this is just. Amazing, thank you.
You're welcome, we're so happy to hear that. We're relieved, don't make any responses like that.
Sorry, Eric, I saw you had your hand up next, but I'd like to defer to Ed in light of his closeness to this whole issue, if you're okay with that.
I, I always, I always defer to Ed, go ahead, Ed.
Ed, fire away, looking forward to hearing what you have to say. You're muted, can you hear me?
Sorry about that, yeah, I, I do have a couple of questions, um. First one, um, regarding the, the community garden. That uh, adjoins the park um, on the west side. Uh, was there any thought or consideration given to possibly uh, you know, uh. Talking with the owners and possibly uh, including that, purchasing that property and including that. As part of uh, Umma Park. That's my first question.
That's a great question, and and I could, I could kind of uh, talk a little bit about that, you know, we received funding specifically for the site. And it's, it's a much longer, much, much more like rigorous process to begin the process for the city to purchase. Land, and a lot of times what happens when there's interest in purchasing what is a private land. The price shoots up pretty fast when, when the city is involved. So we, we are given, you know, the, the, the funding we're given for caper projects, you know, specifically is, is typically for our land that we already. Own and, and operate and have kind of say of what. You know, of, of the renovations that can happen into it, you know, we certainly um, would have loved to have incorporated that site. But I think for um, for the, the, the funding that we have and what we can use, it can really only be uh, given to our. You know, the sites that we have, and we are always interested, you know, with some of us. We would love to be able to buy these lands, but I think it's also a maintenance question too, of being able to kind of maintain these properties and clearing it out, so unfortunately, that, that won't be happening at this site, we can only really. Renovate the land that we have. But um, you know, if that person is interested, you know, maybe that, that, that could be some of the separate discussion with like local elected officials for more capital funding to incorporate that, but. This time, unfortunately, we're only able to, to renovate the, the property that we have.
Thank you, Jim, understood, um. During the, the uh, listening sessions, uh, one of the things that I mentioned is. Um, my, my partner, one of my partners in the organization. Uh, uh, James Burns, who uh, was uh. You know, he's passed on last year, but he was one of the uh, founders. Of, of the Umma Group, the organization, and uh, you know, of the, the actual playground, so. Uh, I, I mentioned, um, well, I asked if it, if it. Were possible, that we have something, you know, in his honor, a little plaque, or, or name a chair or a bench. For him or whatever, uh, i- is that something that's still, it's still feasible at this point?
Um, I, I know, Mr. Powell, first of all, it's nice to finally meet you, Kevin actually told me a lot about you, so it's really a pleasure to meet you, um. But I did, Kevin did talk to me about um, possibly. Having a plaque or something in dedication, um. We can, we can explore that and, and look into something that, that might be feasible, I'd have to. Check with our, our chief, we didn't. We didn't really go into more detail on something like that, but we can certainly have that discussion and go back and see if there's something. A bench dedication or something like that, I don't know, Jim, have we? Have we done things like that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
Dedicated bench or, or, I don't, something, I, I haven't had that situation happen.
Sure, no, that, that's a great question, and, and you know, I think. Ultimately, there are modifications we can do on the ground, and, and I just want to know. Um, want everyone to know, you know, we are, as, as the question came up before, we are pursuing um. Community Board approval, but in that same approval, there can, there can be recommendations for, so uh, uh, for something to like look into. Or something to follow up on, because you know, we, we are in a situation where you guys are about to. Uh, go on recess, which is very exciting, uh, but however, you know, there's, there, you can add into that letter, things such as looking into a commemoration of some sort. Um, and, and we have other sites that are a little bit. Uh, less, you know, like, that, that there is incorporation, but more of like a plaque on the outside, that wouldn't really be part of like a capital. Project in terms of the, the infrastructure, the meat and bones of the infrastructure, but it's certainly, we, something, Mr. Powell, we could follow up on. With you and, and, and the community about, the community board about, maybe incorporating something a little bit further down. The line um, with this project, so that it's not forgotten, and, and um. But I just want to let that known, that, you know, we're not just saying like, this is exactly what we have, and this is what you're going to be getting, it's more like. You can add recommendations and stuff we can look into um, as well.
Right.
Thank you, and, and finally, I, I promise.
No, please, we're all yours.
Um, one of the things that, that uh, we've, we've been talking about for years. Is a sprinkler, now, I, you know, understood, the, the uh, the, the play equipment would be directly over. The, the uh, train tracks, you know, the, the subway cut, and I, I. Totally understand that, that, that would, might be an engineering uh, nightmare. But is there any way that uh, that could be incorporated, I, you know, I've seen play equipment. That have a sprinkler incorporated in. In the play equipment, you know, a little. Little uh, like a little sort of pipe with a uh, sprinkler. Head on it, uh, you know, it's anything like that, and I, and of course, drainage, i- it would be an issue. But uh, is there any kind of engineering uh, that would be feasible? You know, nothing that's gonna go, you know, go crazy, but um, anything that would be feasible, because. That's been, you know, the talk for many, many years, that the kids. That would be something really nice for the kids if there were a sprinkler.
Yeah. That's, that's a tough one here, um, only because when we started to investigate the areas, um. The area where the play is, as you saw in that one drawing, we're at like two feet, two plus feet to the top. So in order to have any type of piping. Or anything like that, it, it would be really challenging to try to get. Water at least to that front portion.
I mean. Yeah, what is the one part, but yeah, like as you mentioned earlier, it's the other part is. After that, we have to capture it, and then bring it someplace, and now it requires structures where. On this one, we just, we, we're really just, because of the subway structure below. And also, usually with sites like this, or when you're that close to it. New York City Transit has very strict rules about um. Excavation, how far down you could go and stuff like that, so. I, I think it would be very, very tough within the site to be able to provide that.
I just want, if I may just make the point, Ed, um, it's Dwayne, um, you know, when the. Site was initially um, in, um, built. You know, we didn't have like the Lefrak Center and their uh, waiting pool and their sprinkers um, pool. Um, that's not too far away, so if we can incorporate it, I still think we have an element. Uh, in the community that works very well, uh, that's not too far away. Um, and also, I also want to just quickly acknowledge that um. You know, Sean has mentioned in the chat that the board will follow up with parks. Uh, regarding the um, acknowledgement of um, the founder you mentioned. Um, and that there is a precedent um, in the district already that, for, for that sort of um, dedication to be incorporated, so. Uh, the board will definitely follow up around, around that.
Yeah, and that's, that, I was so glad that, that, uh, thank you, Mr. Joseph, I'm so glad you, you. Chatted out that site, because that's exactly what we're talking about, there can be. Uh, corporation more on an operational level that we do for a site like the, the, the tot lot. That um, that is, happens all over the place, so it's, it's really not, and we would love to do that stuff, we love to commemorate things like that, so. Um, we'll certainly follow up and, and, and leave the charge on that, so, thank you.
Our district officers will definitely follow, but in, in the interest of time. Uh, and because um, you know, there is a quest for a, a, a letter of, of support uh, around the, the. The design and proposal, um. Um, Barton, do you want to make a motion?
Um, I'd actually let Derek talk, because he was kind enough to let Ed go first, so I think I'll make it Eric the last person, if that's okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Barton, thanks, um, everybody, what an amazing project, so exciting. Um. I, I was thinking, in some way, Ed's question is sort of like mine, I'm thinking about water infrastructure, I'm so happy to see that you guys have live. Plants incorporated into your design, um, it's something that I've noticed. For example, at the tot lot, we've mentioned this a couple of times, it's like. You know, there's quite a bit of space in the. Interior along the edges of the tot lot that had. Past tents, live bushes, and other things that were planted there, and. I don't know what the infrastructure is to. Water these things during the very dry months, or to keep, you know, make sure that these things that we. That we plant and make space for in these designs. Are maintained, so I'm just, I'm curious. are maintained. So I'm just, I'm curious what the infrastructure is to maintain some of those. I don't know if they're just pictures of them, or you're definitely looking to plant like the catnip and the, you know, the, the beautiful trees there. But, yeah, so my question is about parks and maintenance and, I don't know, maybe yeah, I'm curious how you guys do that.
Can you give us a quick thumbnail of how that works, y'all?
Yeah, I could, I could be real quick with that. So that, that's more the operational officer, horticulture team maintains the, the horticulture that is brought into a new capital project. It's very important to us to be able to do that. I think we're lucky that we're in the shadow of, in, in this situation of Prospect Park, that there is obviously a very robust amount of Parks Department operations going on in that park, that we can kind of cater to that kind of maintenance inside, inside this stuff where our gardeners from the district and staff can come and, you know, we, we don't want to build a park where it's going to be barren right after. And when that happens, it's, 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 you know, it's a blemish on us. So that kind of stuff is a priority to us. But yeah, it would be part of our maintenance, our gardener maintenance rounds. And we rely upon Mother Nature too, you know, of rain, but you're certainly, you know, especially recently, it's very dry. So but it, it is part of our process and we prioritize keeping these plants alive throughout the, throughout the capital, after the capital project's done.
Thanks, Jim. Just to, just to piggyback on that, you said the whole Mother Nature part of it. When we look at, at grading as far as the drainage of the site, when we're looking to pitch these, create a pitch to these areas or a little bit of a slope to these areas, the intent is to, where we have those planting beds, to pitch our water towards those planting beds so that the stormwater does go towards those planting beds, so that there will be rain source going towards those beds as well. And that was, that was our hope as we were looking at the design and where those planting beds are too. So just to piggyback what Jim said.
Thank you. Then at this point, I'd like to ask if there's someone who'd care to put forward a motion? A motion of support seemingly is that, Ed, I'd be honored if you would be the one to put forward a motion.
Absolutely. I, I'm so moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so motion straight support, no questions, no comments, no reservations, just motion of support for the plan as it was just presented to us. Correct, Ed?
Correct. And may I just say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Everyone, this has been many, many, many years in the making. And, and Alvin Burke, God bless you. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Thanks to Parks Department, all the board members who have supported this year after year after year. And of course, thanks to Councilmember Rita Joseph for, for funding this. This is a dream come true for me and for my organization. Thank you so much.
Beautifully put, Ed. So I have a motion on the floor. We will vote in reverse. Anybody not in favor of the motion as so stated, please raise your hand now, virtually. Ed, put your hand down. Thank you. I'm not seeing anything. Anybody wish to abstain? Still not seeing anything. And anybody who is present not voting by reason of conflict of interest? Then it looks like it passes unanimously. Thanks to you all who over the years have tirelessly worked for this. Thanks to you at Parks, who in the period of time you've had control of it, have put together what looks to be an absolutely spectacular implementation of what the community wanted. And with that, then I will ask if there is any new business? Old business? And then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I just add one bit of information, just so people know the future of the site too. It's going to go into construction most likely fall of 2024 and take one year to complete and be done most likely fall of 2025. We'll stay in contact with the community board. But I just want to let people know what the future of the site is, that it will be closed for one year for reconstruction, but that won't be until next year.
That was totally worth giving you the last word. Thank you. Then I say we're adjourned unless anybody objects. And so endeth the June 8th meeting of our committee. And look forward to seeing you all on Monday at the full board meeting. Take care.
Good night, Ed.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Great meeting.